Good evening, I'd like to call the March 2nd, 2023 meeting to order. We do have some, we have Stan Anderson on Zoom by way of Arizona. We have a medical situation with one of our council members, so he needed to go to Sioux Falls. And we have another council member that's out of town today that we are not able to connect with at this moment. So with that being said, Carolyn, would you please call Rome?
Welsh. Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Mike Anderson. Would you have a call?
Okay, with that, we'd like to stand and say the place of emergency. Sheriff Bryan, would you like to lead it for us, please? Thank you.
I'm from the United States of America and to the Republic of San Francisco.
Do we have any order of business for emergencies?
No.
Okay, and we've identified that Stan Anderson is attending on Zoom. Item number six is to approve the agenda, and I would like to move item 12, which is our visitors today. Sheriff Mueller and the emergency management to right below number seven, police report. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
A second? Jerry has seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, okay. With that then, we will move right ahead with the police report. Welcome.
Well fortunately for me, it was an uneventful month. We had no major events and no arrests, anybody.
Yes, the report did look somewhat quiet.
Mayor, I really appreciate you letting us come out and hijack your meeting for a little bit here tonight, it won't take too long, but I just felt it was very important after the events we had with the blizzards in December of 2020 to come out and talk just a little bit about the impact that your community had and the volunteers out here had on life safety that night. I was in the command center, I want to just take just a moment to introduce you to Chief Deputy Mark Hughes. He's a new chief deputy that I brought on with me when I was sworn in and Jamie Doreen, he'll be overseeing the law enforcement division now, but Mark and I and Alexa White with urgency management, she'll be talking here in a little bit. And several others were in the command center that day when we were supposed to have this small squall blow through our area that nobody was really prepared for. And I can tell you the panicky feeling we got when we realized that we had over 200 cars stranded in East of Boxfelder and Pennington County. And really weren't sure what we were going to do with them that evening. This thing was supposed to last a half an hour, then an hour, turned into hours after an hour after an hour. I don't think they tell you because you live through it out here. But I can tell you that once we recognized that our small communities across eastern Pennington County had stood up emergency shelters and we had room for these people, we could really go to work concentrating on getting the stranded people off the interstate and getting them safely to the communities. And it was a super big deal for all of us, and I can tell you, I feel strongly without communities like Wall standing up the way you did in Wonderwood and Wasta, that we were people who died that night, 100% confident. We just didn't have enough place to put them, that storm lasted too long and the conditions were too poor to sustain all of those people out there. So you save some lives, I'm going to present some awards at the beginning of the first, I just want to let a couple of folks talk here today. I didn't realize we were going to have a full Pennington County Commission forum here today, or we might need to break some rules. But first I'm going to let Alexa White come up and talk from the emergency management perspective, and then maybe the commissioners will come up.
I just briefly wanted to say thank you to everybody who was part of the shelter operations and I think Mary said, you know, we just did it done. That's what you said when we had our after action call and we were talking about everything. You realized there was a need and you made it happen. The Red Cross has a trailer stage here because we know that this location is like the last frontier for a while when there's a snowstorm. And so that worked well, so even though there wasn't Red Cross personnel here to get that and open it up, you know, we worked with the fire department, we found that, we got it open, and you guys again just made it happen. So we just want to thank you, I think you mentioned all of the conditions that made that extremely difficult. You know, and then we would have lost people, the temperatures were so cold that people couldn't have stayed in their cars. You know, sometimes you can't stay in your car when it's cold, you could have gas and just keep running, but this wasn't one of those nights. So we just want to say thank you to everybody who was part of that operation.
And we have Commissioner Chair Lloyd Lefroy, Commissioner Gary Drews, and Commissioner Ron Ross connected, I don't know who wants to talk, but I know a couple of our commissioners and their family were stuck out there, they got to know you very well.
I did appreciate it because when we left here, the folks get to Rapid City, when we got to Wall, we weren't going any further. And I had a knee, an ankle replacement in November, and I was on a knee scooter. And I thought, you know, if we get stuck out here, I could, it was somewhere between 10 and below zero, you couldn't see where you're driving. When we got to the exit, we thought, we're out of here, well then we had sound wise part, and then it's a gentleman, he came to the rescue, and then the gentleman at RNC Super eight also came to rescue. So I didn't spend, as a backup, the best that we could have done is I'm also Commissioner for Pennington County Housing Redevelopment. And I called our director and he said, you know, we got a facility in, a 28 unit facility in Wall. You can stay in the waiting room, there's a restroom, but that is so much better than staying in a car. We got to stay at the Super eight, but they didn't have an elevator, so being in a new scooter, anyhow, we made it work, but I'll tell you what, I can't appreciate, I just, and I talked to Marty, the former mayor, and he said, you know what, he said, we're going to open up this, we're going to open up that, you guys did that. And so like Brian said, if it wouldn't have been through your hospitality, even those, how the results could have been different, so appreciate it.
Well, I'm Gary Drews, and this wasn't my first experience of getting stuck in Wall. Back 25, 26 years ago, I was bringing back the daughter and five of her friends, and we were supposed to get to the Rapid City Airport so they could all fly to Washington DC for a few days. And we got caught in the snowstorm and we spent the night in Wall and fortunately was able to get into a motel room at that time. We did not anticipate on December 21st, and I got Ron in the car and Sue in the car along with my wife. And we didn't anticipate the weather that we ran into. And so we really appreciate what the leadership here did in making sure the town was open to accompany those that were caught in that storm. So, and I am absolutely elated, and we didn't experience any deaths during that. Because with 50 degree wind chill factors, we could have had that. But with law enforcement and emergency management and the tools that were provided by the city of Wall and others, we all survived, so thank you very much.
I think it's absolutely apparent that the city of Wall staff down, but not only citywide, but your community. And so we thank you. And you know, when I first got the report that the storm was coming and everything was going on, we had two commissioners and we're on their way back. I didn't go, when I found out they were involved, I started to go funding to see if we could keep it here. And we're going to do a separate recognition for our staff, but Deputy Cordell had Chief Aiden play a big part out here through the storm. And Randy says every time it starts to snow a little bit, she still gets a little bit better. We had her doing all kinds of crazy stuff out there and she made a big impact, so I just wanted to pay a moment to recognize her. And we'll have something more formal with our office staff because we had a lot of people that were involved in that, so. I think maybe what we'll try to do is we're going to break it into some small groups and have you come up. Everybody is going to get the same award, so I'll just read to you what that is. Tonight we're giving out Pennington County Sheriff's Office certificates of commendation. And they're in recognition of aid rendered to law enforcement that assisted the sheriff's office in achieving its mission during the snowstorm of December of 2022. And I think we'll start with the city employees, maybe we can kind of come up here up front and be able to do a little bit of a picture. Mark, you want to come help me hand some of these out? And if we miss somebody through this, you let us know who they are, I'll make sure we give them a certificate, and if they're here, they can come up and stand with us with the picture, right? Mayor Mary Williams, Carolyn Anderson, Mike Anderson, Lily Stone, and then Stan is, Stan Anderson. Come on up.
Stan, will you?
Please come down. Let's deal with everybody in the middle there. You're fine, you're fine, you just ran off a one, we got here and we'll get for us.
I'm here, but I'm not a city employee.
That's fine, come on up, come on up.
Billy, come on up, right here next to the sheriff.
We got to make sure we get him in the picture here.
You're blocking me out now.
Thanks, everybody, we appreciate it. And then we have a couple of folks here from Pennington County Highway tonight, Jeff Thorinson and Lance Predesman, Lance's family, Derek Hoot. You guys can come on up. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. County Highway really went a long way, we had units stuck all over the place, they brought pieces of equipment out, they probably didn't run it before. We're a rescue deputy, we're a state, and we count on them for a lot of things in Pennington County, and they always step up. And that vote is Garrett here?
Oh, that was Garrett.
Oh, you're right there. I was told that you're going to, you're going to be accepting the certificates for the Wall Volunteer Fire Department, the Wasta Volunteer Fire Department, Flint and Interior.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Jerome says you're representing the whole. And we definitely cannot do what we do, Dan, and pay out with all of our volunteer fire departments across the county. They are a full force multiplier for sure, and I just can't think of the time we've ever asked them to help us out where they turned us down, so thank you very much. That is all I had tonight, so thank you very much for your time and for everything that you do for our citizens, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you for coming, what a great treat, and especially to have three commissioners here, thank you very, very much. So thank you, Brian, thank you.
We'll get those other awards out, you want to get me a list of who else was involved as we can.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
Safe travels now, and don't leave here next time. Okay, so that brings us back to, I believe, item eight. Is there anyone that needs to declare a conflict of interest this evening? Okay, that moves us along to approving the consent agenda, which is made up of the minutes, the claims from the city, the fire department, library and cemetery, as well as the budget report, and the on-call schedules as well as vacation for employees, the ambulance financials, the golf course, and the sales tax and BVP, BBB report. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Okay, Dan is moved.
Second.
And Rick has seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the underground construction pay app, and that was sent out. And that particular pay app covers the last items of the lift station, which we had waited for a long time to get the parts for that. And it's also covering the relief belt because there was an issue with that too after they finally got that in and got the lift station to work. And there is some dollars that are being held back from that because there is still some final cleanup from when they went in and fixed the leak, is that the right word, Garrett? And the seating that's got to take place again because of disturbing more dirt when they did the force main repair. So with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the pay app for number four?
That's the 74,100, right?
Correct, right, yes.
So moved.
Okay, so Jerry has moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, Stan, Stan is seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, did we get Kelly on? That sounded like a Kelly, okay, thank you Kelly for joining us. Okay, so motion carries. Now, because it's on Zoom, I only have to do a roll call vote if, or do I?
If you get a negative.
Okay, very good.
Any difference, if you get all no and one but, you know.
Yeah, okay. All right, just wanted to make sure we're doing things appropriately. Okay, the next change order is from TDM. And this particular item involves no money. The only thing that it is affecting is the date because of the kind of weather we've had. The change date has been extended to May 15th, just so that they can get that project completed, including because the water is in, the store is in, the road gravelling and finishing, I mean, it really looks like a street now. I mean, it is amazing, what a great job they've done under some very difficult conditions. And so the time has been extended because they've got to still let all the snow melt, the mud kind of settle down so that they can go back in and do some of the topsoil work yet and the seeding. So this does not involve any money with this change order, it's just the fact that it's changing, extending the date. And then they will bring back a final payment at the end of that time period or when they complete it. So with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the date change order?
Move to approve.
Rex moved, and Dan is seconded, any further discussion or question? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries. All right, so we moved the visitors, so now we're at public comment. Remember that during this time, members of the public can discuss or express concerns, but you have a three minute limit. Is there anyone that would like to address the council and public comments? Okay, seeing none, we have an agenda request, Lee, would you like to come to the podium? And because he's on the agenda, he does not have a time limit, well, 24 hours, Mike.
I'm going to do it a little bit shorter, actually, I was hoping for full council, so we'll probably do that the next week. Okay, and again, I want to address the whole council when they're here.
You know, Lee, that would be good because our city attorney, Stephanie Trask, will be here then, and it seemed like there were some concerns about transparency.
Well, and I bought that, I'm going to talk about here tonight, the transparency side of it, but where I was going with that was, I'm going to talk about the first half of what I had, the second half, I'm going to wait till the next time, just when hopefully everybody's here. But with the transparent.
Lee?
Yeah.
Kelly, can you speak up, please?
Yeah, okay, yeah, on the transparency, on the transparency side of things, what I was looking for was as these court proceedings go forward with gloves, not only in the sense of what is actually happening with the case going to the Supreme Court, but the costs that are associated with it, we sit here and we talk about TDM having a change order, and it wasn't, it wasn't a fee that was, that they were asking for a change order, but the engineers come before the council to explain what they're getting paid for. And I would ask that the attorney, she's here every month, why doesn't she come to the city council meeting with her bill and explain to the city council so the residents of town know what we're being billed for? I think that's a reasonable expectation, I think that the $25,000 you guys have estimated this to cost the city to take this to the Supreme Court is probably their guess as to what it's going to cost, we've already with filing the appeal and the cost of the appeal and whatever that guy charged for that document, I mean, what are we in when we're ready? 5,500, 7,500 bucks, I'm just guessing. I mean, it'd be nice to let the people know what we're paying for this as it goes, and I think that's a reasonable expectation we do with other vendors to the city.
Okay, very reasonable.
Something to keep it upfront and honest with the people. The other thing that I would question is the amount of conversation that happens in executive session. My question is, who is the city council? It's, no, you guys represent the city council, but the city council is the people of the city. You guys represent the people of the city, the city is being sued, correct?
Correct.
The city of Wall is being sued. I think the people of Wall have a right to know a lot of the conversations that happened behind closed door. I mean, I understand that employee issues, those are private, but the conversations that the city has, I mean, what's being said behind those doors that your constituents can't know? I think you need to use caution when you use executive session to have conversations.
Okay.
Can I, I didn't quite understand about either, I actually contacted a different attorney because I felt like some of the stuff that I can't talk about was with city money, your money. And the other attorney that I'm bound, I can't talk. So that is, it's, I guess, the law is very, very, very disappointing to me, but and right now, some of the stuff we got is confidential and it's.
I realize there's some confidential stuff, but there's, I mean, how many of these conversations are confidential?
Just that one that I'm aware of.
Right, the one document.
And that's where I'm going with it, I mean, I understand employee issues are private, but the doings of the city, the ongoing underlying of the city is, how much of that is confidential? Is it not the people you represent? Anyways, that's what I've got, the second part of my topic, I'll have that conversation next week because it pertains to everybody, every city council member. So I don't try to like handle to be here.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Okay. That brings us to item 15, chamber.
I really agree. I'm just here to introduce Katie Bruce, who's our new chamber director. She started this week, so you know, she has it all down and has it all ready. I just actually tried to break her in for, you know, city council, so we've got a couple of things to go over, but I just want to introduce her and give you a little bit of background of who she is.
Thank you, Courtney, good job.
So like Courtney said, my name's Katie Bruce and I'm new chamber director. I've been in the office now for four days and I'm trying just to dive in headfirst and get acclimated as quickly as possible. So if anybody needs anything, please let me know, reach out, I will be happy to help you as much as I can. And then we do have some upcoming meetings, so we have our chamber meeting on March 8th at 7:00 AM. And we have our monthly luncheon meeting at noon on March 14th at the Red Rock. And then we have our annual meeting on April 19th, and there are three spots opening on our board. And there are nomination petitions in the chamber office, so if anybody needs one, just stop in and grab one. And that's all I have for you tonight, so thank you.
Katie will be here.
Yeah, yeah.
When's, when's the chamber meeting?
It's March 8th at 7:00 AM, so.
That's the board of directors.
Oh, the luncheon, I'm sorry, March 14th.
And then will that be at the Red Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yes, Katie, great to have you in the office for sure. Okay, economic development, done.
I'm going to stand in for Kelly, she's gone for a while, away from us here. But while economic development is continuing to do fundraising for, to help out the Wall ambulance service, we started a friendly challenge, publicly asking local businesses to donate and then continue the chain, challenging other local businesses to donate as well. We raised, as of last night, $5,030 through the GoFundMe page, and others have donated directly to the Wall Ambulance Fund that is set up at First Interstate Bank. It's kind of a fun little challenge that we got going. We had an aging in place committee that had a roundtable discussion at Prairie Village to discuss senior care options, which would keep, help keep seniors in Wall living in their homes where there are the happens. Our panel of experts included individuals from Monument Health, Corner. Cornerstone Caregiving Shine, which stands for Senior Health Information and Insurance Education Program. They talk a lot about Medicare and stuff to help people out with those issues. And we're working with Monument Health to put together. A place for seniors to go to get this information in a summary format like a pamphlet type thing. That we will be putting at the clinic and at the next health fair, we're going, we've been asked to maybe put together another roundtable discussion about. Discussion about the same time as that health fair. We're continuing to work with the Black Hills Area Community Foundation to request thirty million dollars from Congress to combat the housing crisis. In the Black Hills area, we had submitted a letter of support along with you guys here several weeks ago. These funds will be used for qualifying area committees to establish their own housing trust funds. Senator Thune's office is taking the lead on this. Request and will know by mid-March what the appropriate rules will be for the upcoming fiscal year. Which will determine if this request is allowable, but it'll affect the whole Black Hills region, including Wall. Uh, with the industrial park, KLJ is working on replating Lot One. To accommodate for the lift station and this will ensure that the city will be able to access the lift station. And at any time that is needed, and we are still taking, having uh, taking applications for the economic development director position.
Have you received any?
We received two so far.
Alright, thank you, Don. Did anyone have any questions or comments? I can't see none. Alright. So, the mayor's report today, uh, or tonight is going to be relative to the Echo Valley. Loan application that we have been working on. Uh, through the housing infrastructure program with Sotacuta Housing. So we're at the point um, that I sent out last night a, a summary sheet. Of what uh, this document uh. Totally says, it's a ten-page document, so if anyone wants more information or. Uh, wonders what the summary, the, the items I put on the summary, what they would refer to. You're free to look this over. Uh, the only document that we do not have yet, uh, KLJ is still working on the final plat. For the twenty-four lots of Phase One, and they will have that for us at the next meeting. And so, my purpose of bringing this to you tonight is so that if you had any questions. Regar- regarding the summary I gave you, we could uh, visit with you or try to answer them for you. Uh, at the next meeting, the application fee for closing will um. Need to be addressed and that would be, we've already sent in uh, our beginning. Uh, deposit, but we'll owe ten thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Working with Chaz Olsen and Beverly. Uh, I had Cots, we have set a projected closing date for April first. And uh, I've indicated to them that the construction completion date would be September one. The total amount uh, of the loan is one million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's a interest rate that is stepped, starting with a one percent over five years with a five-year balloon. At the end, and the payments will be made according to the amortization schedule, which is an attachment too. Carolyn uh, recommended that we use an annual payment, the first payment will be due July first, twenty twenty-four. And that amount will be sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars. Echo Valley will also be contributing a hundred thousand dollars when uh, we start construction. And um, the interest rate, our interest will not start until we draw our full, our first monies. At this point, the city of Wall's already put in ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars toward this. Uh, project, so uh, that is working toward the amount that, that we are obligated for in this loan. So with that being said, is there any uh, questions about uh, this loan application?
You know, I, I like that on the, the loan. And Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like the last, they capped the interest rate at four percent. So the last two years, we paid four percent, I thought that was nice.
Exactly, it is a low-interest loan. And if you heard, uh, or if you follow the legislature. You know that on the very first day of legislature, they passed that fifty million, hundred and fifty million dollar. Grant for house, our infrastructure, that they didn't quite. Get all the way through last year like they intended to, so then I was uh, stressing because. Did we move too quickly on this and maybe we could have got grant dollars? But in conversation that I had Monday with both Chaz and Beverly. They indicated uh, there's, they had it on their agenda to be discussed at their board meeting on Tuesday. They removed it from the agenda. Because they had some things that they didn't quite have worked out, and they probably won't have the rules out until the first of June. Then they'll take applications for thirty or sixty days. So I indicated to them, we were gonna stick with the loan idea. Because we'll have this project completed before they ever even get to the point where they'll be able to get some dollars out. So, just if you've been following that and you were wondering that, about that yourself, I wanted to uh, share that information with you. Does anyone have uh, any questions? Stan, do you, did you have any questions or thoughts after looking over the summary?
Nope, I do not, it all looks, looks good to me.
Okay, Kelly, did you have any questions?
Uh, no, no.
Okay, so as I said, we will be approving this document then for submission then at the next meeting, which is March sixteenth. And we will have, need to approve the closing fee. And as Carolyn's um, has on the agenda, we also need to submit this resolution twenty-three oh two. Which is uh, just a document that indicates. That there's twenty-four lots, fifteen of them are supposed uh, designated as portable housing. That the total amount of the loan, what the interest rate is and that we have, as we did last uh, month. Put our reserved earmarked five hundred thousand dollars to a CD as cash collateral for this project. So with that being said, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three oh two.
So move.
Okay, Stan has moved.
Second.
And Kelly has seconded. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Uh, opposed, motion carries. Let me keep this right place. Okay. Truly, the Sotacuta Housing has been remarkable to work with and it, and. We've been in many conversations with not only Chaz Olsen, but Beverly. And Scott Brown, so they've been very helpful and moving this over the goal. Okay, that moves us to item twenty, finance officer report. Carolyn, do you have time?
Twenty is an agreement for that uh, grant.
Oh, forgot, yes, skip that, okay, nineteen, okay, would you like to talk about that, Carolyn? Thank you.
Well, as you know, we moved the um, project of Fourth Avenue out a year. For budget purposes and I think for the engineers to gather more information on getting that project moving forward. And so part of the requirement is to get a, an extension on this grant that we did receive. And so there's this document that needs to be signed and it's asked. Letterhead or the front page asks for the mayor's signature. And a copy of the minutes to reflect that, so I needed to have this in the. Minutes to approve her signing for this grant extension, which. We are out until April of twenty twenty-five to receive.
Okay, so you've all seen the amendment agreement for the grantist extension. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Rex moved. Okay, Jerry seconded. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, you falling asleep with the directory? Okay, so that amendment then has been approved for the grant extension. Okay. What's the score in the game?
The girl's one, sorry.
Do you have a number?
Seventy-four, sixty-four.
It's like a one-point game. You're just been stressing over that, okay.
You can hear my phone vibrating.
Okay, perfect, well, good for the Eagles.
So that means you're going to state, yeah, wow, awesome.
And I also heard, were they doing something special at halftime for the football team down there? Did I get bad information of that? I think there was something, because guess what, the Sup- not Super Bowl, but um. The playoff rings arrived. I was gonna say where. Okay, so while he, until he gets back, can you do the, your report then, Carolyn?
Sure. Um, so March is always the month for doing the equalization meetings and that will be on March twentieth by state statute. We have to call a meeting whether we get appeals or not. The um. Paperwork has to be filed in my office on the sixteenth in order to be addressed by the board on the twentieth. Um, I did put publications out in the paper, should be this week and next week they'll show up. Um, I just wanted to kind of get this in front of you so that you're prepared rather than waiting until the sixteenth to jump it on you. So you can kind of put it in your calendar. I will know more on the sixteenth, how many we have received. I would know all of them actually because they have to be received by four o'clock. And then I can give you a better idea of, and you can give me a better idea, how early you want to start that meeting on the twentieth.
Okay, so, and who has to attend?
I have to have a form, but you as the mayor and myself as a school board member does. Count in that form, so.
Who else would enjoy equalization?
I look forward to it, I think this year's really gonna be fun.
It's usually all the council that.
All the council comes? Oh, this isn't a volunteer thing, it's a, see you there? Okay, well, perfect.
He chooses to have warmer weather than we're having at that time.
No, Stan, you gotta come back.
Carolyn, of course, I know it's early, early on, but you might even, it might even go two nights.
I mean, it can.
It can.
That one year, I don't remember, was that in twenty-one?
It was three nights, one time.
And they were long nights, they weren't just, I mean.
I know, I received. I, I received uh. Mine via email the other day and uh, houses and stuff were up like eighteen to twenty percent.
Pretty nice.
Alright.
I'll give you some numbers, meeting on the sixteenth, so that, wanted to get that onto your calendar. Um, I've been working on the annual report. Keeping my fingers crossed that I can present that to you at the next meeting. I have till the first meeting in May, but I'd like to get that off my plate as soon as possible, so. Been working on that, and then um, I did send you or include in the email that I sent. That I sent out to you asking those who wanted to attend the March twenty-ninth district meeting. And I only got the response from the mayor. And so um, I as well would like to attend that meeting, and so. We'll have to figure out the timeframe. Whoever to get hot springs.
Okay. Alright.
That's all I have.
Oh my gosh, and they all got them in these boxes?
Um, there was, was two different kind of boxes. That one was like the dynasty and it has your name and everything on it, and the other one was just a little box and you open it up and it had like an LK light. I thought that one was neater, did he just set it on the shelf and?
Pull it out of there.
It comes out easy, but it's just like huge.
Where is this? Seriously, you don't wear these, do you?
All, all the kids are wearing theirs. When I got, when I went in to get mine, Christmas, that had his on, he's like, hey Eric, how's it going, Eric? Yeah, registered that as a weapon.
Wow.
So the engraving on the inside, is that, is your personal one or did everyone have that? The, and the big sexies is what we call the defensive line guys. Coach, so that's what we got all that, I was there, then. There's hogs on the side and that was the line, the offensive line. So, so, yeah, it's kind of cool to remember all the little nicknames and memories too, that they. Yeah, it was pretty cool. Gonna get another one next year though. I hope so, yeah.
So we're proud of those football boys and we are proud of those girls, if they just work their way into the state tournament. That is incredible. Uh, and speaks highly of our sports program here, but we also have an incredible academic, so. Kudos to the school, we're proud of them. Okay, so then, public works uh, report then.
Mine don't have much, just. You know, we'll be doing all winter and I just had one item, I had a, a brush mower for the Bobcat on the budget. And they don't think they'll be able to get it, so I'd like to move that money over to buy new tires for the lawyer. They already bad.
It's like skates on that thing. The day when I drove by it.
So, and then that's about all I have, just.
So what do tires cost? I don't wanna know this, okay.
I think they're like. In like a thousand apiece maybe.
And how many do we need? Okay.
Have you uh, heard anything on the boat of ours? Good luck.
Yeah, no, it's, I don't know what to do, I don't know if we get our money back and try and find something somewhere else or. I mean, luckily there, the ones we have still run.
Is it, the order still in?
Yes.
Maybe they'll come through, I mean, the supply chain has been slow.
Yeah. So Manson doesn't even like when I call him. I called him about the brush mower. And he thought it was the long morning. But no, I'm keeping up on that.
So, no problems with him switching that over to um. The load for tires, is that okay, Rick? Is that okay with you, Stan?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Anything else?
No, I don't have.
Thank you for moving all the snow. You guys have. That's turned into a pretty full-time job.
We're running out of places, but bad thing is, is now it's warming up and everything's so muddy, we can't. You've got a mole that's on me just for payback, it's gonna grow.
Okay, item twenty-two, is there any items for discussion? No action would be taken? Anyone have anything?
I have something. Today at uh, four PM, Waldrug in the cafe. Uh, an older gentleman that had some kind of walker. Fell down in the, in the men's room, cut his head, his wife was trying to help him. He's from Rapid City, likes to come down for his veterans' donut. Our managers responded uh, really well, uh, Greg, uh, David.
Our managers responded, uh, really well, uh, Greg Davis, Cecil Heave, the. Greg was, uh, stuck right, right with the lady. I, I called him, uh. Right before the council meeting, I, I was just curious about the ambulance response time. The, the ambulance was there in five minutes and I'll tell you, in a deal like that, an elderman, elderly man. And he, he must have been kind of big, because I think it took four or five of our guys to help. Facilitate him out of the bathroom, but, but the ambulance was there in, in five minutes. And I can't imagine what we do in that kind of situation without an ambulance. Anyway.
Okay, well, hopefully that will all work out for that gentleman then.
It is, uh, their, their son, uh, works for Monument Health in Rapid City, so.
Okay. Probably got it covered then. All right, any other items for discussion? Okay, the next council meeting then would be, uh, March sixteenth at six-thirty. And we do need, have a need for an executive session, very briefly. Uh, so, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
Okay, it's been moved. Okay, Dan has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, I will call this out of executive session. Uh, item number twenty-five is other, is there any other business that needs to come before the council tonight? Hearing and seeing none, I declare the meeting adjourned. Stan, that's eight oh nine.